Go back to motions for the purpose of introducing a letter from Speaker Judy Wampat requesting the waiver of a public hearing on Bill number 105-32.
Hearing no objection to moving back to motions. The motion?
So, okay. So, Mr. Speaker, the letter that has been received from Speaker Judith Wampat, subject matter is a waiver of a public hearing on Bill number 105-32, which pertains, it's an act to authorize subsidy payments received in connection with qualified school construction bonds issued pursuant to Chapter 58b of Title V Guam Code annotated. And I think maybe it would be appropriate at this time to have the speaker actually speak on it and further clarify the request.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator Ada, for moving this. I'd like to place Bill 105-32, which is an act to authorize subsidy payments received in connection with qualified school construction bonds issued pursuant to Chapter 58b of Title V Guam Code annotated.
I believe...
Oh, he placed already? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it hasn't. I have not made the ruling on waiving yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, okay. So, why did you call me?
I don't believe. I thought you were going to speak on the waiver.
Oh, I know.
The letter has been provided.
Yes.
Is that to be attached to the journal or are you going to read it into the record?
Oh, no.
Okay. Do you want me to read it into the record?
Yes.
I think we should.
Okay. All right. The letter reads as follows, Mr. Speaker. "I'm kindly requesting to waive the public hearing requirement for Bill number 105-32 COR, an act to authorize subsidy payments received in connection with qualified school construction bonds issued pursuant to Chapter 58b of Title V Guam Code annotated. The primary purpose of this legislation is to authorize the use of the qualified school construction bonds. The first lease payment for the expansion of Okadu High School payment date is scheduled for June 1, 2013, and the qualified school construction bond subsidy will be utilized to pay the interest component of the debt service, which would allow the lowest cost of funding of the expansion of Okadu High School as set forth by Public Law 30-182. It is critical that this body passes Bill number 105-32 COR. The qualified school construction bond subsidy will reduce the borrowing cost of the expansion of Okadu High School by $10,895.95 over the life of the financing." Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, there was a... "will save $10,895,952 over the life of the financing. The savings realized from the qualified school construction bond program could be utilized to address other vital programs of the government. Your approval of the request to waive a public hearing is appreciated, and should you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me." That, Mr. Speaker, is the contents of the letter that has been submitted by Speaker Judy Wampat.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on that or anybody have any objection? Hearing no objection. Hearing no objection. I accept the letter and waive the hearing on, public hearing, on Bill 105-32. Did you have a...
So, the motion then, so my motion then is to place Bill 105 on the agenda. The title of 105-32 is an act to authorize subsidy payments received in connections with a qualified school construction bond issued pursuant to Chapter 58b of Title V Guam Code annotated.
Any objection to placing 105 on the agenda for today? Hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What I'd like to do now then is to place 105 in the third reading, and I'd like to just briefly explain again what was in my letter.
We may need to take a short break. I understand from the clerk the bill is now being run. Copy. It hasn't been distributed to anybody. Received a copy of Bill 105. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. So, I'd like to repeat my motion then is now to place Bill 105-32 in the third reading file, and I'd like to briefly discuss it.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Speaker. Just to give, you know, everyone a little background information, because this was something that we've been working on for a little over three years, and we finally, you know, completed everything, and this is the last step and more of a technical thing. So, to, the whole situation is that, and you've heard this time and time again, is that there's overcrowding primarily in the north and overcrowding of our northern public high schools. And in the 30th Guam Legislature, we had passed Bill 413-30, and it was signed into law as Public Law 30-182 to authorize the government of Guam to enter into contracts for the financing, design, construction, and long-term capital maintenance of additions and improvements at Okadu High School. This authorization then is intended to substitute in part the facility needs of a new northern high school to existing lands that are currently under a lease to the Guam Department of Education. The expansion and the construction of the Okadu High School will allow GDOE to take advantage of existing utilities, infrastructure, and athletic facilities at a considerable cost savings to the government of Guam. Additionally, Public Law 30-182 provided a mechanism to minimize the financing to the government of Guam, and this was through the use of the qualified school construction bonds. The QSCBs were a form of bonds authorized by, under the Section 54F, subsection D of the Internal Revenue Code. Issuers of the QSCBs, the school construction, qualified school construction bonds, are eligible to receive direct payments from the government of Guam, which offsets a portion of the bond interest payments. So, under current market conditions, the government of Guam can realize substantial net interest savings by issuing the qualified school construction bonds over traditional tax-exempt bonds. We're very fortunate that a local banker, the Bank of Guam, provided the upfront funding for the expansion project at an interest rate of 7%. The QSCB program offers an interest rate subsidy. This is a federal subsidy, and in this case, the amount is 4.67%, which effectively takes the borrowing rate down to 2.33%. That is the lowest interest rate that this government has ever realized, and it doesn't even, I mean, it's still even lower than some of these recent bonds that the government has gone up for, that we thought were great, but this is even greater. The QCSB subsidy will reduce the borrowing cost of the Okadu expansion project by $10,895,952 over the life of the financing, which runs through December 1, 2029. This is 17 years. The primary purpose of Bill 105-32 is to authorize the use of the qualified school construction bonds on a continuous basis when the subsidy is received. The first lease payment for the expansion of Okadu High School payment date is scheduled for June 1. That's why the urgency to place this on the agenda, June 1 of 2013, and the QSCB subsidy will be utilized to pay the interest component of the debt service, which would allow the lowest cost of funding of the expansion of Okadu High School as set forth in Public Law 30-182. It is critical that this body passes Bill 105. The QCSB subsidy, the qualified school construction bond subsidy, will reduce the borrowing cost of the expansion of Okadu High School by, again, I said, a little over $10 million, almost $11 million, over the life of the financing. The savings realized each fiscal year from the QSCB program could be utilized to address other vital programs of the government of Guam. So, in essence, that is what Bill 105 would do. I also have with me, and I can submit this as a copy, at the time when the bill was introduced, testimony was actually prepared already for the acting administrator of GIDEA to submit testimony, and in his testimony, it basically kind of reiterated everything that I've discussed and explained to everyone. So, I just want to thank my colleagues for, you know, listening to this and giving this serious consideration, and more importantly is that they'll be able to vote for Bill 105. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 105? Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just have a couple of questions, if the author of the bill will so yield.
Madam Speaker, there's questions that are asking for you to yield.
My first question is, it sounds great. I'm just worried about the, how sure are we about this federal subsidy, I mean, with sequestration, federal government cutting back? Are we certain that this subsidy is going to be a continuous and ongoing subsidy that's going to be made available? Is there a guarantee from the federal government that this subsidy is going to continue to be provided?
Madam Speaker, to yield.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Is this working? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it's already available. They have already been in contact with the Internal Service, Internal Revenue Service. It's available, but it will not kick in until some time that we've made this payment. Wells Fargo Bank is the trustee that would receive this, and then from there, of course, it will go to the local bank. It is, it is no longer being offered, so it was already been set aside a couple of years ago, and that has been held because of the fact that we needed to pass legislations in order to trigger, you know, the process for it to continue and, of course, to now make it available when we provide the first payment. That's at least my understanding.
Is that satisfactory, Senator Siniklas?
To a degree, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to clarify, if this federal subsidy requires a, requires an appropriation by the federal government every year, or if this subsidy is being appropriated as a lump sum and then drawn down so that we're getting the money all up front for this subsidy? Because if it's appropriated every year, my only concern is that we may have confirmation that we have the money available now, but appropriations can change at any time, and I just want, I just want certainty that this subsidy is going to continue, because absent the subsidy, excuse me, absent the subsidy, we're going to be paying a full 7% on this money that we're borrowing. With the subsidy, it's very, very attractive at the 2.2% as the speaker said, and I'd like to commend her for constructing such a very attractive opportunity for our people and for our children, but I just want to make sure this subsidy is something that's going to be continuous and that it's not dependent upon the considerations of the federal government and the Congress and a reappropriation, because the last thing I would want is for us to go down this road, assuming that the subsidy is going to continue to be there, only to have that turned off, but we're still on the hook for the obligation on the full borrowing amount, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Did you need a response to that?
Yes, I wanted clarification as to whether or not this subsidy is an annual appropriation.
How do we lose her? Oh, okay. We'll take a short break. She wanted to go get the information. I understand you have a response to the question that was posed by Senator Siniklas.
Yes, and I'm, and thank you for the recess, because you gave me the opportunity to be able to make a call to GIDEA and also to the developer, and my understanding is that during the time when they were negotiating this before its closing, that, because the closing just took place this year, a couple of months ago, and... took place this year, a couple of months ago, and as a matter of fact, February, and the question did go out because the concern of sequestration. And according to GIDEA in their conversation with bond counsel, that the QZAP federal subsidy is not subject to sequestration. But to also provide assurance at least to the local bank, Bank of Guam, who went out then, of course, and, you know, providing the full financing for the Okadu expansion, is that the government with that balance, if we were, for those who weren't here, but what it is, is that it's a balance of the $9.8 million that was available from a maturity of one of our bonds, 6.7 or 6.7, I think it is, that actually is reserved for JFK for its annual debt service and the balance of the 2.9 is for Okadu High School expansion.
Senator Siniklas, is that sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, for that particular question, I'm satisfied. And I thank the Speaker for acquiring the necessary information for that. I did have another question. Because this Okadu expansion item was something that was very much worked on in the previous legislature, I do have some catching up to do in terms of trying to fully understand the gravity of the project. So I would like to pose another question to the author of the bill with respect to the expansion project in particular. How many more students is this project intended to accommodate?
Thank you. Originally, again, from previous legislature, legislation was passed to limit the size of certain schools, elementary, middle, and high school. And for high school, any new high school, we said that we wanted to keep it, the highest was at 1,500. And what has happened, because there are more students in the north, so the school community and DOE came and asked for us to amend the law specifically for Okadu High School to allow and to take in an additional 500 students. So they will then be receiving that many students. And what, part of the expansion actually would include the resurfacing of their field, the track and field. I would also build a culinary arts classroom because they were, they're currently the only high school without it. There will be classrooms, of course, I'm not sure, but like one wing of classrooms will be added. There would be an area for, almost like a general assembly in front of that particular wing that's being built. And it would also provide a route for the buses to be able to drop off and pick up students, connection of that wing to an existing wing. There's so many others, but it will definitely be classrooms that will be adequate to take on the additional students. And that population, of course, has been amended by law then to, you know, to be able to allow the schools to go beyond the original legislation of what a cap should be for the high schools.
Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, I thank the Speaker for helping me to fully understand the scope of the project. And I just wanted to talk on the main motion, Mr. Speaker, and kind of put into perspective what it entails, if I may.
Please.
I understand the need. And no doubt, the Speaker has done a tremendous job in getting us a very, very attractive arrangement that's combining federal subsidies with local lenders. And it's something that I can definitely get behind. But I kind of just wanted to put into perspective what this means for us, because we've been talking about it a lot during this session. What this means is that when we go out and we do this, we're going to be increasing, and I'm going to use 2015 as the target year, because 2015 is when we have a lot of other obligations that are going to be coming due. 2015, we have a $15 million increase in our debt service as a result of other bonds that we've borrowed. In 2015, we have the $8 million balloon payment for the Guam Memorial Hospital loan. And now, when we do this financing, we're going to be increasing our debt service by an additional 1.2 million in 2015. And that's after the subsidy. The annual net principal and interest after the subsidy is going to be an additional 1.2 million. And just doing some real quick math, this is to increase the capacity of the school from 1,500 students to 2,000 students, adding another 500 student capacity. But when you break that down on a per-student cost, it's coming out to $2,250 per student, per year. So, and that's just for facilities. That doesn't even take into consideration the additional needs that we're going to have in teachers and all the other areas there. So from a financial perspective, I just wanted to go on the record and state that I rise in support of the bill based on the need and based on the attractive interest rate, but also with the ongoing concern that 2015 is going to be a very difficult year. And this additional $1.2 million in debt service now, that this is going to put on that particular year and for other fiscal years thereafter, is something that we're going to have to be very mindful of as we approach additional financial considerations of this government during the budget cycle. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Any other senator wish to be heard?
I see no hands up. Madam Speaker, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I know earlier I had tried to give everyone an overview of, you know, how this all came about. But a little bit more information is that, and we all know this, that the overcrowding is in the north. And the previous speaker has no objection to that. I don't think anyone here has an objection to that, to be able to house our children. We don't want our schools to be overcrowded. But there was a plan at one time, a proposal, a bill proposal, actually, that I'd introduced in the 30th Guam Legislature, and that was to build a separate high school while the whole JFK was going on. And what we were trying to do at the time there was that we wanted to build it up north, close to where all the sports facilities are. Because then, one of the things that we thought was something really creative to do here and to help reduce the cost for the government was that build a, do a conversion of the school there to a middle school that would transition into and feed right into the high school, and build a high school without necessarily the full complement of gyms and track and fields and all that, because they would have access to all of the sports facilities during school hours. And there was, of course, an opposition that was, of course, voiced by families who lived in the area beyond the school because of the traffic congestion that they would anticipate. And in addition, of course, JFK thought that we were going to forego the building of JFK, and that was not the case. So the alternative then by the community and the Department of Education was to do this expansion. And hence, of course, then now, the same funding source is actually going to be used for that expansion. The thing is, is that it is not like additional monies that's going to come from the general fund that would not be able to be used to take care of other operations in the government. These are monies already that, like I said, have been matured and has gone into the JFK campus and to take care of all the maintenance costs, equipment costs, you know, cleaning and everything, basically, in this lease. That's the exact same thing that's going to happen with the Okadu High School expansion. And because of this subsidy, because we're just, I mean, you know, just think about it. We've got an interest rate of 7%. There's this federal subsidy of 4.67%. In essence, we would be paying at the 2.33%. And over the life of this, the savings, the savings that the government will realize is actually 10 million, 10.8 million, almost 10.9 million dollars, which now we can use to then take care of other needs of the government of Guam. So the monies have been there and reserved and definitely put aside. And you would see that in this fiscal budget year, when you look at Chapter 1, is that you would see then all the revenues coming into the government, the anticipated revenues, projected revenues, and then how then they are being appropriated out. And one of the very first things that we do as a legislature is to address, yes, mostly, I mean, first of all, our obligations, our financial obligations. And you would see there reflected would be the JFK High School, and you would also see the Okadu expansion. And so that then, and then, yes, of course, whatever the balance that's available will go towards the operations of the government of Guam. So I'm hoping then that I've provided sufficient information to answer anyone else's questions. Thank you again very much. And I move that Bill 105 be sent down to the third reading file without any objections.
Hearing none. I believe we have a hearing at noon, at 12:30. So maybe we should all go to lunch early, and we'll get back at... Madam Speaker, were we going to have session this afternoon, after the hearing?
After.
The hearing starts at 12:30. I don't believe that's going to finish.
I think it is.
There's just one collection made here, and that should be a comma, a period.
Recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to pull Bill 26-32, as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, and I believe it'll stand further amended on the floor. This is sponsored by yourself. I move that it be brought back to the second reading file, top of the second reading file, for a quick amendment.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we place Bill 26-32, as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, and further amended on the floor. And this is relative to requiring a public notice website. I move that that be placed in the voting file, but I have to make one amendment first.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So on page three, line 22, at the end of that line, we insert the words "for that respective branch of government." Because Senator Yamashita made an amendment to this section, and so...
Any objection?
Okay. So on the motion then to place Bill 26-32 in the voting file, I renew that at this time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection. Are we going to recess until three or two? How long do we figure the...
Let's go to two and then if we're going to adjourn, we go.
All right. We stand to recess until 2 o'clock.